I'm going to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order for January 12, 2015. A number of items that are on the consideration have been removed from the agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to read those, and I'll ask someone to please close the doors.
Items that have been removed from tonight's agenda are item number one, the local law for best value purchasing; item number nine, on billboard ordinance clarification; item number 11, sale of 824 Londonderry Road; and item number 13, sale of 410 Union Street.
All right, if the clerk would read the first item for original consideration.
Item number two, for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds to the Rose Garden Restoration Committee.
Okay, without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, a resolution naming the Schenectady Daily Gazette as the official city paper.
Without objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four, an ordinance amending the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady, Chapter 264-61i3 regarding electronic message boards rate of change, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding changes to the code of the City of Schenectady regarding electronic message boards rate of change to be held on January 26, 2015.
All right, just calling for a public hearing without objection on consent, item number five.
Item number five, an ordinance amending the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady regarding Chapter 264-14 Waterfront Mixed Use District, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding changes to the code of the City of Schenectady regarding waterfront mixed-use district to be held on January 26, 2015.
Again, calling for a public hearing without objection on consent, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing a referral to the Planning Commission regarding proposed changes to the zoning code regarding the waterfront mixed-use district.
Without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing a referral to the Planning Commission regarding proposed changes to the zoning code regarding the intersection of State and Brandywine.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to extend the moratorium on convenience stores.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the sale of four Carey Street properties to the Capital Region Land Bank.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the sale of 946 Norwood Avenue.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution recognizing Reverend James Bookout and the Bridge Christian Church.
This will be taken out of order, Ms. Prazzo, I believe you will present that. Okay, and then we have two items for unanimous consent, item number 14A.
Item number 14A, a resolution authorizing the sale of 2418 Campbell Avenue.
Will someone move that to the agenda? Okay, Mr. Mutavaren, second, Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. And then move it to the consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye. Okay, and then item number 14B.
Item number 14B, a resolution recognizing the Hamilton Hill Arts Center.
We don't have the actual printed resolution yet, but we'll get that shortly. They are having an event Thursday night, so we wanted to have the resolution. But, Ms. Porterfield?
...to recognize an employee of the Hamilton Hill Arts Center.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification, then recognizing an employee of the Hamilton Hill Arts Center. So again, does someone move that to the agenda? Okay, Ms. Prazzo, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor?
Aye.
And move it to the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. Mutavaren, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Ms. Prazzo, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, I will now call the City Council meeting for Monday, February 12, to order, and ask you to rise through the invocation by the Reverend Dr. William Levering, First Reformed Church.
Let us pray, Almighty, never-loving God, you who have placed us in particular places, and you who through our effort or through fortune have placed us in particular roles, we ask your blessings on this council, this mayor. Be with them in the middle of the night when they call your name. Be with them in meetings run long and patience where short. Be with all of us as we try to work for the common good. Be there when we call your name. Help us to support them even when they make mistakes. Help us to be there cheering them when successes affect us all. Help us all to reach towards your deeper life. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I'll ask Chris Morris of SLIC to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Prazzo?
Present.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Kozier is excused. Mr. Riggi?
Here.
Mr. Mutavaren?
Present.
Ms. King?
Present. All right, we have one out-of-order resolution recognizing Reverend James Bookout. Ms. Prazzo?
So that's how we get new public servants. We let you in, but we don't let you out. Madam President?
You have a floor.
Thank you. A resolution recognizing the contributions of Pastor James Bookout and the Bridge Christian Church. Whereas Pastor James Bookout, a full-time pastor for more than 37 years, prides himself on being a force for good in his own life and the lives of others, and whereas his commitment to fellowship is best demonstrated by his belief that in reaching out with daily acts of kindness, there can be improvements in our communities, and whereas Pastor Bookout opened the Bridge Christian Church in 2013 to act as a beacon of hope in Mount Pleasant neighborhood, and whereas the church has become an important fixture on Crane Street while offering a weekly food pantry, hosting winter clothes drives, and holiday meals for the less fortunate, and whereas contributing to the continued renewal of the City of Schenectady, Pastor Bookout and his church recently decided to expand and remodel an adjacent property in order to expand their food pantry at a kitchen -- excuse me, and dining hall facility, as well as a cafe, now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor Gary R. McCarthy and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize Pastor James Bookout and the Bridge Christian Church as positive forces for social good in the City of Schenectady. I move the resolution.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Well, it's our honor to be here and to serve our community. I don't have a whole lot of words to express my love for this event here this evening. I can say that I am thankful to all of you and all of your hard work. You are in our prayers on a daily basis. I want to thank my leadership team from the Bridge Christian Church here. These are the ones that make the thing, the whole organization move ahead, and they're shaker, the movers of our community here, and we are doing what we are doing simply because it's on their responsibility, their shoulders, and they're doing a great job. And I look forward to a forward movement and motion in 2015 to change our community. We are on a mission, and I know that probably a lot of people cannot understand a leadership position unless they themselves have been involved in it, and I just want to say that because of that, we added more prayers and more prayers on top of other prayers for this, for this community and for this board here that is moving and driving our church ahead and the city ahead. So I just want to thank you for serving our community. We love you. We love our community. This is a lifetime commitment to me, and I'm not going to be somebody who's going to blow in here and blow out. I've been here for 30-plus years and continue to love this city and will continue to give my life to it. Thank you so much for this honor. Thank you, Lisa. We love you too, and you're such a blessing to us.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we have no public hearings tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December 22. Okay, Ms. Prazzo, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. Okay, communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, January 12, 2015, under the category of official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated January 12, 2015. Under general, there are none, and there are no petitions.
Do we have any committee reports? No? Okay. Then we'll move to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have three people signed up to speak. The first is Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor, item, Agenda One, which was polled today, but it was dealing with the best values. In looking at the new legislation that was done from last week, again, you still have not put in persons with disabilities, and that's in Section 224-4, Definitions. Under federal contracts and federal funding, you're supposed to require, and under state law, Title I has been incorporated into the Human Rights Law, which is executive law, Paragraph 1, and Title III has been included, which is Paragraph 3. So you need to include person with disabilities. Also, too, is that Council Member Mutavaren made a suggestion, and it was slighted a little bit, and it said in Paragraph C, it said the city should have a written justification if it bases a best value award on the criteria that are objective and quantitative. The word "should" should be "must," because "should" means, well, it just means what it means. It means they could or could not. It doesn't mean what Mutavaren had asked for, Councilman Mutavaren had asked for. Also, too, is that when you develop the RFP, you're asking the staff to give you the best value. You're asking the staff to say, if you want a lock set on a door, it's got to be of 100,000, 150,000 pulls, it's got to be 5 and 1/4 inches long on the lever handle, that's best value, that's what you're asking for. It has to be grade one. You specify into that piece, then you send it out for the RFP. The way this legislation is now is that you turn around, develop the RFP, you go out and say, I want 100 widgets, and then all of a sudden, some other person says, hey, I won my bid down in New York City. I got, I got a widget on number two. Hey, it's better value. How about giving me this? And you've thrown out the whole entire RFP process, and you're tired, threw out the whole entire piece. What if, what if we rebid widget number two? Here, can our local people be able to get that bid? We won't know, because you've got best value. You're going to bypass that system, and you're going to short-change the economic development within the city, and you're going to short-change the small businesses, minority businesses, women-owned, and the disabled. You know, and it's just, when you're taking a look at this whole entire process, you hire, the mayor's staff hires staff that is supposed to be competent in developing an RFP, and it shouldn't be subjective, and, you know, I mean, just come back with it. Look what happened to, almost a year to two years ago, when you guys had the police vehicles. You said, well, why can't we get a fuel efficiency vehicle? You know, that's, you know, that's where we need to look at. And look what happened with the golf course, with the bid with the contract for the food service. You went into a subjective-type best value instead of getting the best and accept the lowest price and the best value for revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanika Frost Amusa.
Good evening. Since the item that I was going to speak on has been pulled, I'm going to reserve my comments and look forward to working with the council and picking back up on that legislation, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Richard Unger. Richard Unger? No? All right, I have no one else then signed up to speak on the legislative agenda. I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll move to the approval of the legislative agenda. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye. All right, we'll move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I bet eight people signed up to speak. Jason Plank is first.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor, this is the time when we have our Community Development Block grants that go out for the RFP. We still have not had a public hearing on that piece. Also, too, is that in May of this year, we're supposed to have a five-year consolidated plan put together. Again, we have not held public hearings or asked us what's going on. I mean, when you, we've got April 1st, about, is when you give the 30-day public comment period of looking at the plan. Well, you're supposed to have, you're supposed to have public participation into that plan. So what is it? The staff's going to develop it and say, this is what, and dictate to the public, this is what we want? That's not what the, that's not what the Community Development Plan is supposed to be for. That's not what the five-year is, to go out to the public and ask, what can we do with that Community Development Block grant money? And, you know, this is what the pattern of behavior of this department has been for the last five, five, five years. We had a goal in there of creating 100 jobs, and not one proposal was even put in through. We haven't even met that goal. And there was other goals within the 2010 we haven't even done. And this is a pattern of behavior of what's going on. We have the Community Development Block grant that pays $50,000 to the affirmative action officer out of the county. What have we received out of that affirmative action? We haven't received very little. We had a $14 million Erie Boulevard project, 13 of it federal money. Not one minority or person with disability where apprenticeship program was included. Nearly eight weeks ago, you guys approved a 2.5 million, 100% funded project for the roundabout on Erie Boulevard. Again, you had no minority participation, you had no person with disabilities, and you had no apprenticeship program. You keep violating affirmative action, and that's one of the goals within a Community Development Block grant. How are we supposed to get people back to work? Again, you have, you have all these luxury apartments going in, but where is the affordable and accessible housing? You have left Hamilton Hill, you've let Mount Pleasant to die on the vine. And it's called an economic distress in housing. When you cluster a whole bunch of houses of nothing but luxury, and you don't include affordable and accessible, that's a discrimination in housing. So, I mean, these are all some of the stuff that goes within that five-year plan. How do we address those issues? You know, and, you know, these are some of the things that are going on. You have over next, February, March, and January, left of what's left, is that you're putting out for RFPs for construction, for the CHIPS program and so forth. Where's the affirmative action on that? Like I said, we need to start looking at some of this information. Thanks.
Thank you. Larry DiPaolo.
Good evening. Usually Monday nights, I'm teaching my entrepreneurship class, but with the recent turn of events in Paris, Ottawa, New York City, as a veteran of the armed forces of this country, I felt the need to address everyone in this room. Just because something hasn't come to our community yet doesn't mean that we shouldn't be ready for it. Basic question is, police officers in New York City were attacked, a soldier was attacked in Ottawa. What is our readiness plan here at the local level? Because that's where the problem surfaces. Now, this time of year does bring up an awful lot of feelings and thoughts. I spent eight months on a flight line at Daran Air Base in Saudi Arabia during the Gulf War, back in 90 and 91. While I was there, homicide bombers were, you know, they were unique to that part of the world. So you stood on a flight line, the body, with body armor, and your M16 over your shoulder, loaded with the safety, ready to go, and you're watching everybody. I can put myself in the place of each police officer who's out on the street today. Some very, very bad people have declared war on all of us because we're Americans. Doesn't matter whether you're Republican, Democrat, conservative, or liberal. We're Americans. That flag that's behind you is what unites us, and that's what they want. So I invite everyone in the room to really think about your whereabouts at old times. Think about a plan for your home. I already have a plan for my home. God forbid ISIS ever comes to my house. I'll just get the mop out, and you can finish up from there. These are some really bad folks. I'm not here to scare anybody, but there are innocent people, and 30-plus years ago, I took an oath to defend this country. It doesn't matter that I, that my M16 is back in the armory and my flight boots off. It's for the rest of my life. It's for every innocent person. So, Mr. Mayor, I humbly ask if you could get together with your emergency preparedness people and kind of figure out an on-the-street strategy, and if you ever need the backup, you can count on me to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. AP Karata.
All right, what I would like to speak about tonight is something I would like to call a secret war that is happening in the city and nation. The war I'm talking about is the lack of respect of others' war. There are two aspects of this war. One, individuals who like to beat up the elderly and young families and others, and disrespect the law officers, and they like to think this is fun and post the videos on YouTube and Facebook so others can see and hear. The crowd's laughing and think this is funny, when it is not. Now, the other aspect is that the group of people who call Muslims think Muslim is a race. It's not. It's a religion. What they're doing is they're forcing cities and states to accept their twisted backwards law when there's only one law in the state, the Constitution and Declaration of Independence. Muslims and others are trying to force their twisted backwards law in cities and states. The fact that they're born Michigan has already accepted it. It's a safe haven for Muslims. Their state welfare has accepted translators to speak in their language and accepted them, and the fact that this is happening here in the city, mainly the individuals being elderly and what have you. I have a friend who got beat up in Mount Pleasant Middle School, just because, in fact, we just, you know, walk in the street, mind his business, and crowds thinking it was fun and okay to do it. Thing is, he got hurt, okay? There's people getting hurt with this self, lack of respect for others. And the fact that if the City Council is not aware of this, and the mayor's not aware of this, which I doubt it, which I think you guys are aware of it, the city needs to do something about this now, because the fact that people's lives are in danger for this lack of respect of others' war. Thank you.
Thank you. Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. On 305 Dewayne Avenue, there is a house there that's boarded up. It's been boarded up there for years, and a couple nights ago, I went, I looked through my window, and there was candles burning on that house. There was candles. I had to go over there, put those candles out. And, you know, this, they're going to cause a fire. It's going to happen again, and we need to do something about. Right now, people are in that house. The police came a couple of months ago, and they boarded up the house of the bat there, and it's still, I don't know how they're getting into that house, but they're getting in somehow, because all the windows are open upstairs. Every one of them are open. But something has to be done about it. I would like to thank the bike rescue for giving the kids, 30 bikes we give out to the kids for Christmas, and thank the sheriff for supplying helmets for the kids. And what I would like, everybody to go and see the movie Selma. It's going to be showing Friday, and I wish that everybody would go and see that movie. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I say, we've got one big issue that I know of. Some of these streets are salted, some of these hills are not salted at all, and cars are trying to get up the, up the hill and can't get up the hill, and got to go all the way around the other way, even though by the museum, same thing. Cars can't get up that hill, neither one. And, and the walk lights, they got to be put up. So, got to do something about it. They've got all the flat streets salted, but we've got to get these, do something more for the handicapped and the seniors as far as crossing the streets. Some of these, these speeders are still speeding up and down the street, and it's not right. Then somebody gets hit and hurt, and the one who's speeding is the one that's the blame. But this has got to stop. These speeders have got to stop speeding. That's it.
Thank you. Portia Austin.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, Council members, I would like to just speak I would like to just speak shortly, briefly, on domestic violence in Schenectady. And it's an issue that is near and dear to my heart because it happens too frequently. And in reference to the domestic violence issue that happened not too long ago, the article in the paper stated that it appeared to be an isolated incident. Domestic violence is not an isolated incident. Domestic violence happens because somebody, something has happened to somebody's mind and they feel that it's right to injure another person and usually it's an intimate partner. I don't think that there's enough seriousness taken when it comes to domestic violence. It should be on everybody's mind and it should be on everybody's heart. And when you have perps that have been in the system on probation or parole, then that issue needs to be looked at because most times, they have already committed a domestic violence incident. And so, you really have to record that and you have to look at that seriously. That incident that just happened, that young man had already been arrested for domestic violence. There should have been something in his record to indicate that. And I don't know if it was, but according to the article, it didn't. And it wasn't important to indicate or to let the public know whatever charges that victim had because guess what? She was already gone. And so, you said something negative about her that it didn't matter because she was dead. He needed to have been in some type of a program. There, when you have parolees and probationers coming through our community supervision, there, there needs to be some, some type of a domestic violence program, some type of training, some type of anger management, something that they should have to deal, to go through so that they know that they are, they have anger issues and that it can lead or it does lead to domestic violence, especially if they were there already. I just would like to ask you that, well, I would like to say that in, statistics say that 22% of parolees under community supervision were identified as having a history of domestic violence. 22%. It may not seem like a lot, but it's more than it should be. And I'm asking Schenectady that there be more training, be more training. I know that there's a risk assessment program going on in Schenectady now. Look at it seriously so that we can try and prevent this at all costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Randosik.
Thank you very much for hearing me. My name is Stephanie Bandosik and I'm a third-generation resident of Bellevue. After a year of studying dog training techniques, I adopted my beloved Clarabelle in September and we began weekly training classes. She recently passed her Canine Good Citizen Test, which is the first step toward becoming a certified therapy dog. In addition to hospitals, schools, nursing homes, we are especially interested in comforting our homeless citizens and our injured veterans once she's certified. I'm not sure how many of you are pet parents, but if you are, I'm sure you know that animals are as much a part of our family as any other member and that we work tirelessly to keep them happy, healthy, and safe. Unfortunately, we continue to encounter off-leash dogs while walking on a weekly basis, sometimes multiple times per week, and on more than one occasion, we have encountered more than one loose dog on a single walk. On a few occasions, we have been chased by two dogs traveling together. I cannot tell you the terror I feel when I see a dog, let alone two dogs, running towards us off-leash. When no handler is in sight, I try to call animal control and always receive the voicemail. My call has only been returned by animal control once and the advice I was given was to find out where that animal lived and they would visit the home to see if it was licensed. When I call the non-emergency police number after getting no response from animal control, I'm asked if the dog is vicious. First, my goal is to escape quickly enough not to find out if the dog is vicious. Second, any loose dog poses a huge safety risk to our community, not only to other dogs and their handlers, but to drivers who may encounter the dog when it darts across the street. Any driver could easily lose control of their vehicle and cause a crash with another car or even hit a pedestrian or a biker. What is even more infuriating is that at least half or more of these loose dogs we encounter have an owner present. Quite often, we can't visit Hillhurst Park because I can see them off-leash from across the street. We've seen them run into Fairview Park with an owner far behind. We've had them run out of houses when the owner opens the door. We've had them run out of cars when the owner opens the door and chase us. We've had them leave their property off of their yard when their owner is present. As I'm yelling for the owner to please call their dog, I invariably receive a response of it's okay. But the terror in my voice should let them know that it's not okay with me. Each time, I instinctually throw Clarabelle on the other side of me and put myself in harm's way to get between them. I worry about her safety, I worry about my safety, I worry about trying to carry home my 60 pounds scared and injured dog, possibly wounded myself if we were to be attacked by one of these dogs. I would, you know, any suggestions you give, I would certainly take into consideration and I hope that you take into consideration how serious this is.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on city business, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed and we'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Prazzo.
Yes, just quickly, want to thank the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association for hosting us at their recent meeting. I attended along with Councilman Ferrari, Councilman Mutavaren. We opened up a great conversation about, you know, the ways that the city is progressing and their concerns also in their neighborhood. So, just want to say thank you for inviting us and starting the conversation and we look forward to continuing it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam President. Some of the points that Ms. Bedrosik brings up, I see her walking her dog a lot. She's the best mommy I ever saw with Clarabelle. She's all over, all over Bellevue. It doesn't matter where you go. She's very thoughtful and respectful of other people's feelings and their animals. But this has been ongoing. For some reason, I brought this up before, especially in the good weather, I don't know why people think, once they get to the park, it's okay to unleash your dog. It's not. And I think maybe at the times, and I'll, I'll certainly call animal control and let them know at the times when dogs are running loose, but they can't be there all the time either. But that is true, what she's saying, it's hard to get a hold of animal control. I can't get a hold of animal control a lot of times. Sometimes I use Facebook as a better tool to get a hold of one of the ACOs. So, it is, it is a problem. But I just want to make people aware that there's a leash law in the city of Schenectady. I think most people should know that, but there is. Your dog has to be leashed for the safety of your own dog, you know, their dog, and somebody else's dog, and people. There was a tragedy not too long ago where a dog, they get mauled, where a dog got loose or jumped out a window. But the stuff in the parks, that's just, I see it all the time because I live next to one park and I live across the street from another park. And again, it's like, I don't know, it's like open season. As soon as the car door opens, they take the dog out on a leash. As soon as they walk into the park, the dog comes off the leash. That's no good. That, that doesn't work. And, and as a matter of fact, one time, a lady came to my house scared to death because the dog chased her and her grandson out of the park. This was a couple of years ago and it was a big dog and, and she was afraid. So, it's just something we got to bring more attention to, I believe, and maybe, maybe some more enforcement with the leash law because that's a very important thing. But I thank Stephanie for bringing this to the city council because it's an ongoing problem. As far as what Mr. DiPaolo brought up, I mean, this thing with police officers being assassinated, I don't even know what to say about it. There's nothing to say except the world has gone loony, that's all I can say. But we have to support our officers. I'm going to wear this blue ribbon just as long as I can, as long as I'm able to, in support of these officers that have been slain and the officers that could be slain. Their job is dangerous enough, but without having to worry about people just having open season on police officers. Again, I'm speechless when it comes to things like this. I don't know where the world is going, where everybody's head could be at, but these are people that are sworn to protect us. And if they can't even protect themselves, they can't worry about being ambushed. It's, it's very sad and very frightening, but I think we have to just support them all we can, whatever we can do with any safety issues to make their, their job safer. I think we have to also look into that. And that's for funding, you know, we have to kind of open the door because whatever we can do to make them safe, I think that's what we have to do. And I know there's a bill coming up, I believe, for the state about bulletproof window, side windows for police cars and I'm all for that. I don't think the cost, I did check with Manhattan Armor in New York and it's not crazy, crazy, the price. It's something that we could do in-house, switch the glass out. It's not a big deal and I'm sure we can do it. I can do it, so I'm sure our shop can do it. So, it's not a big deal, but for the, just the safety of the officer sitting in their car that they don't have to worry about somebody coming up and putting a gun to them and kill them when they're, they're not even ready for anything except just living their lives. So, again, it's very frightening and very frustrating, but I think whatever we can do to support our police officers, that's what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd just like to say I was very pleased to, at the remarks that the mayor had during his State of the City address. I was especially, it resonated with me regarding the, the jobs that happen, that are happening and will continue to happen in the future in the city on a regular basis now. I am, I see people who are looking for work, so I'm looking forward to those people being able to be able to part of the renaissance in Schenectady and to get, to be able to get some of the jobs that are being created through the various things that are happening. Especially there's, I mean, I'm seeing a lot of people who are working, or working in construction or have those skills and we know that there's a lot of demolition that's going to be happening. And people are, you know, interested in work, so I'm looking forward to make sure that everyone who wants to participate in getting a job so they're able to, be able to take care of their family as well as be contributing taxpayers in the city of Schenectady will be able to avail themselves to some of the opportunities coming forward. Additionally, I just have to do a correction in the minutes from last week, last two weeks, I'm sorry. In the comments that, it said that I made, it's, there's a word missing, "not," where I, it says she then clarified she, it says was arrested, the word "not" should be in there. So, let's make sure that that gets in there. Okay, just want to say that publicly and clear up those slanderous remarks that were made. Also, I'd like to announce that this Thursday, the Hamilton Hill Art Center is going to be having its annual awards dinner. It's at Malosi's Restaurant. The reception starts at 5:30, dinner's at 6:30. There'll also be a silent auction. It's called Visions of a Beloved Community and there'll be legacy awards giving to Reverend William Levering and also Michelle Bergeron from, who was a community activist. So, everyone's invited. There's still an opportunity to purchase a ticket. You can buy a ticket for $100, $60, or if you're, get to a table of 10, $50. So, I, the phone number is 346-1262 if anyone is interested in attending. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferrari.
Madam President, it's with a great honor that I announce that the first meeting of the Millennial Council will be happening this Wednesday, January 14th at 6:00 PM in Room 209. We already have some wonderful individuals who are making a difference in our city participating. Some are young business owners, nonprofit employees, and other young people who are making wonderful contributions. So, this is, I guess, a public invite for anybody between the ages of 18 to 34 who live in the city of Schenectady and are committed to making significant contributions to the city to attend. All that we ask is for a resume to be sent to myself or to Chad Putman and we will look forward to seeing you there. Additionally, the Woodlawn Park Redevelopment Committee of the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association is hosting their annual ZD and Meatball Dinner. It will be on January 20th at the Hibernian Hall from 5:30 to 7:00 and hopefully, all the council members will be able to attend following our, our meeting. But it looks like it's going to be a wonderful night. We're having some pre-cas bread and there's going to be a raffles 50/50. So, I invite everybody. Looks like there's going to be a macaroni or two over there, so you're all invited to attend. And I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mutavaren.
Just want to touch on the mayor's. Thank you for your great leadership. You had another successful year and look forward for brighter things for Schenectady in 2015 and I'm happy to be part of the team to do that. I just want to touch on a, on a recent press release from Metroplex regarding the pilot project. And many times, we hear that a pilot project is not working, but here we have documents that show that the pilot project is working and we have seen a great increase from 2013 into 2014 and it's available to everyone to have a look at it. Great success is happening and thanks to the leadership, thanks to Metroplex, and thanks to everyone who's involved in these, getting business back into Schenectady. I just want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Happy New Year, best of luck and all the best. Look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yield my time. I've talked enough.
You've talked enough tonight, okay. I have nothing, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
It wasn't too bad.
No, not at all. I hope this will do it.